The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for January 4th, 2024 will please come to order. Please place all electronic devices on mute, remove hats, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
And Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Thank you. We would like to open the floor for nominations for President for the Mishawaka Common Council for the year 2022. There are motion.
I would like to make a motion that we nominate Mr. Greg Hicksonbaugh to serve as President of the Council for 2022.
Second?
Second.
I will now entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for the nomination of Mr. Hicksonbaugh for Council President?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Motion carries by a 9-2-0 vote. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hicksonbaugh and invite him up to the podium.
Don't take my duties away from me, please. Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, friends and colleagues. I appreciate the opportunity to serve for another year. And before we move forward with the election for the position of Vice President, a little bit of housekeeping. Once again this evening, we are offering the opportunity for members of the public to participate remotely in our meeting, so we would ask that members of the public, please place their microphone on mute during the meeting, with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing his or her public comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank everyone for their cooperation. And with that, I will now open the floor for nominations for the position of Vice President of the Council for 2022. Mr. Compton?
Mr. President, I nominate Councilman Ron Benicki.
Is there a second? A motion has been made and seconded to nominate Mr. Benicki for the position of Council Vice President for 2022. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, then at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And with that, Madam Clerk, will you please poll the council on the nomination of Mr. Benicki for the position of Council Vice President?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Nomination passes 9-2-0.
Congratulations, Mr. Benicki.
Thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh, and thank you all for your compliments. Thank you.
And with that, we will move into the approval of our minutes from the regular meeting of December 20th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
There are none.
And there are none. Nor are there any reports of any special committee, nor any ordinances on first reading, so we'll move into resolutions.
Resolution R. 2021-32, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 2572 Miracle Lane, Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a used variance to allow outdoor storage containers screened by a seven-foot-high fence in a C2 commercial district at 2572 Miracle Lane, Dunham Sports.
Thank you. We will now move into the public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-32. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward.
My name is Ed Fisher. I'm with Fisher Land Surveying Services Office at 303 East Third Street in Mishawaka. And I am here representing McKinley Town and Country in their petition for a used variance for a storage container. This container is behind Dunham Sporting Goods, and it is for their use for excess storage for equipment in their effort to remain relevant in the times when we have shortages and excesses at different times, and they have seasons to deal with, so they have to have a place to store things until it's time to put them out and rotate their stock. So that's basically what this is about. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Fisher and Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fisher, how many containers are there?
One.
Just one?
Yes.
What is it, a 20 or 40?
It's 40.
40?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Volker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Mr. Fisher. It's good to see you. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
So, is it already there?
Yes, it is. And they were told that they could have it there until such time as they got this approval. So that was... I don't know when it was placed personally.
Okay.
But it was there, and I believe Mr. Prince's office maybe are the ones that they contacted regarding it.
Okay. And is it going to be moved, or where it is is where it stays?
No. Where it is is where it's going to stay. It's up against the back of the building, about, I would say, 20 feet of it sticking out beyond an L in the building, and they're putting a seven-foot-tall fence along the south side of it, so the purpose is to block the view from McKinley.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone present with us this evening who also wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9-2-0.
Ordinance is on second reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2021-50, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow continued single-family residential use with a new 3,072-square-foot, 20-foot-high accessory building at 230 Ireland Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2021-50, report that they have examined said matter, and their opinion should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we will move into second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2021-50. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is William Sinkovitz. I live at 230 Ireland Road. I recently bought the property with the intention of putting up a pole barn. I live in the city right now, and I have a lot of stuff, or I did live in the city. I have a lot of stuff. And my company owns a building currently. We're in the process of probably going to sell out here recently, relatively soon, and start looking to retire. I looked into buying the building from my business. It would be cost prohibitive to do that, along with the taxes. It's a commercial building. It's owned industrial. So I thought, well, it's time to move, so I bought a house. Before I purchased the property, I went to the Planning Commission, and they kind of led me to believe that I would be able to get it rezoned and stuff like that, and build a pole barn. I was hoping to get this done in November, but the closing date on the house took longer than expected, so I ended up here now, hoping that you guys will approve this for me.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sinkovitz? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, how are you? So you just purchased the property?
Mm-hmm.
So the building that's in the back of it is not your building?
No, that's the neighbor's.
Okay, because it's enormous.
Yeah.
Is yours going to be as large?
No, it'll be somewhat smaller.
Okay. I'm glad to clarify that, because sometimes people do something and then, you know, come to get the proper variances or zoning or whatever, so...
No, I try to do everything up and up. I incurred some substantial expenses already on the property, so I had a sewer hooked up and city water put into it, so...
All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm just curious, what kind of stuff are you talking about storing?
I have several motorcycles. I have a small car collection, some garden equipment, just stuff like that. I do have... The reason that I was hoping to put it as large as it is, I have a 40-foot-long camper that's down at Yogi Bear Campground at the moment. I thought if I ever decided to bring it home, I would like to have a place to put it out of the weather.
Thank you. Mr. Compton?
Yes, thank you again for coming here tonight. And so this pole barn is just for storage. You don't plan on living in it?
No, I have... There's a house on the property.
It's kind of a popular thing, you know?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Barn dominiums or whatever?
No, I'm a... The house is already on the property.
Okay, so it's just for storage. And do you have room for a little two-seater car that I could... Thank you very much. I'll support this.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Sinkovitz? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Thank you, Mr. Sinkovitz, for coming. Want to wish you congratulations on your future retirement. I know you've known you for quite a while, and you've worked really hard on your business, and hate to see you leave the neighborhood, but hopefully this passes and you'll get what you need.
I mean, part of the reason why I picked the house that I did was, I currently live about seven minutes, or I did live about seven minutes from work. This house is about eight minutes from work. I work 60 hours a week. I'm on call every night, and I get called back to work about four out of five days a week. So it's important that it be pretty close to work, so I get there. We're a small business and...
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you. Good evening. The house next to you that has the large building there, they're in the process of building, is that in the city as well?
No, that's in the county.
That's in the county. So your property is the city's end?
To my knowledge, I'm the only property on the street that's in the city, and it was annexed because of the PUD that was set in place.
Okay.
I believe them other houses that are on Ireland or Reiman Highway, I think those might be also in the city also, but I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Then I will echo Mr. Mamalenti's comments. I wish you well as you're moving into the next stage of your life. I think the last time I saw you, our boys were wrestling together at the high school.
Yeah.
But it's good to see you, and congratulations on the move, and I'm glad you're staying in Mishawaka.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9-2-0. Proposed ordinance number 2021-51, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow for storage facility at 512 West Cleveland Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2021-51, report that they have examined said matter, and in their opinion, should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will now move into the second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2021-51. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
So this is Brody...
I was just going to ask, is there anybody online who is here to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance?
Yes, so this is Brody Glenn of Centennial American Properties. So we're the applicant, and here to answer any questions or go through anything that may be needed.
Is there any other detail that you'd like to share with us before I open up the floor to questions from the council?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if... I assume there's a staff report that goes through the site plan, but what we're doing is limited access climate-controlled self-storage, which is a use that we're doing throughout the country in secondary markets. And so there's no direct access to any units from the exterior of the building. All access will be from inside the building. The building itself is three stories, roughly 107,000 square feet, and we've got an out parcel between Cleveland Street and the building that our hope is to do some type of quick-service restaurant, coffee-type place there to create activation there in front of our store.
All right.
I'm happy to go through elevations or as much detail as y'all would like. It's up to y'all as to how much time you want me to go through as far as the presentation.
Well, thank you for those comments, and at this time, I will open up the floor for questions or comments from my colleagues. Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Thank you. I just had it... So the self-storage is going to be kind of in the middle of the parking lot, and the restaurant building that's there now is going to be razed, and you're hoping that you would be able to sell or lease that property to another restaurant? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. So we'll raise the entire existing restaurant that's there now, and we will build our building at the rear of the north side of the property and leave a half acre or so on the south side, on the front of the street frontage, for some type of QSR.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Please.
So what will that look like in the interim? Are you going to put grass on that, or pave that, or landscape?
Yeah, so it'll take us a year or so. It takes us from 10 months to build a building from when we have footers in the ground. And so our plan will be to market that at the same time. If there's not a use for that, once we open, then we will. We'll seed that, so that is, you know, it's not just dirt that looks there. Of course, we have a building that's operating in the rear. We'll make sure it looks as good as it can look.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Compton?
Yes, Mr. Brody, thank you for being before us tonight. A couple of questions. One is construction of these units. Are they prefabbed and just set in place, or is that something you build in place? And if it is, who are the contractors to use? Do you seek local contractors, or do you have traveling contractors to do that work?
So it's actually a retail-type construction. We use a 10-by-10 grid, but then we use what you normally see in retail. So we'll do... It's a metal building inside of veneer, which will be ephors and brick or some kind of stone material is what the laman or the person will see. None of it's prefab. It's all... We'll bring all the units and the metal partitions into the building once we get there. What we do is we bring a general contractor with us that builds these for us all over the country, and then they will sub it out to local subs, so masons, steel erectors, all MEP stuff, so they'll sub it out to those guys. So kind of the general contractor oversees the entire construction project, and then the subs, who will all be local, or mostly, just depends on who bids it, will be the one that actually built it.
Okay. The other question I have is, we've had some activity in that area that has piqued interest from neighbors. Now, I'm looking out here. There could be people here that are going to speak on this. I don't really see anybody, I suspect, that will. Have you heard anything? Because they were quite vocal on some other projects that we had right in that general area.
So I personally have not heard Jason Tankersley, who works with us, is also on the call. He may have heard, I believe he would have said something. I will tell you, our use, like I said, we're doing these all over the country, and generally, you know, the complaint, if there is one, is our building is fairly large. I mean, this is a big retail area with a mall right across the street, so that doesn't really pertain here. But from a use standpoint, our use is a pretty quiet use when it comes to neighbors. It's a use that's needed. I can tell you from a supply and demand standpoint, climate-controlled self-storage is something that's needed in that area, in that trade area. We don't create a lot of issues with capacity from traffic, from utilities, from noise, from a question of what will it be? There's very little chance that we will fail. Our use is a use that we're doing, like I said, throughout the country, and it'll be operated by a national operator. And so, no, we have not heard from anybody. I will tell you, I was chairman of the City Greenville Planning Commission in South Carolina for a long time. This is a use that is compatible for what is around there, and a use that I think will be used by the residents within a two-mile trade area or so.
And I don't disagree with you. I'm just curious. We haven't heard anything, and a little bit surprising to me because of what has gone on there before, but if you haven't, I wish you luck. I think it's a good location for something like that, and that little shopping, what was a shopping area, is kind of coming back a little bit. There's some proposed other things in there as well, so we'll see if that all develops, and I think it's good. I think it's good for that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions from the council?
Sir, I have a couple for you. Thank you for being with us remotely. My assumption is, based upon the address that you listed in the petition that was filed, that you're speaking to us from South Carolina or someplace a heck of a lot warmer than Mishawaka, Indiana at this point. Am I close?
Well, I wish I... I am in South Carolina. I'm actually at my house here, but I wish I could tell you we were warmer. We're not. We were about three days ago, but over the last couple of days, I think today the high was in low, or low 40s.
Well, I'm sure you understand that you're not going to get a whole bunch of sympathy out of us for that point, but I wish you some warm weather in the near future. Let me ask, you know, as I look at the staff report and the proposed ordinance that's in front of us, there are a significant number of conditions that are built into this matter that will need to be abided by as this project moves forward to the development stage. And we've had great success with folks from out of the community who have done development in Mishawaka, and we always want to welcome good, solid developers from wherever into the community. By the same token, we've had problems in the past with people who aren't from the community, who, quite frankly, when they're in front of us for these type of matters, commit to do things that aren't followed through thereafter. So what kind of confidence can you give us that this multi-page number of conditions that are embedded in the matter before us are going to be followed through by you and your company? And in particular, if you could, could you touch on what type of local representation? Who's going to be the person here on the ground who's going to make sure that the representations that are going to be made this evening are kept?
So as far as, like I said, we do this throughout the country. We've done stuff from the state of Washington all the way to Florida, and I recognize your concern. As I mentioned earlier, I was chairman of the City Greenville Planning Commission and keep that. What we like to do is we bring our own civil engineers, our own architects from out of town. We like to hire local landscape architects, local land planners, to help us meet the codes and the wishes of the jurisdictions. As far as the conditions, we are fine with all the conditions. In all honesty, when most zoning codes were done, it was not contemplated our use. Our use is a use that's really come about over the last 10 years or so with climate-controlled self-storage. It's just a use that wasn't there before that is today. And so we're fine having our conditions really being for our building, because that's what our plan is, and our building will be there for a long time. The true cost of our building excluding land is somewhere around $10 million, and so, once we build our building, we expect to be there forever. With this, the only complication with this particular site is the retail or QSR that we'll do out front. I know there is requirement for a turn lane and a traffic study that goes along, I believe, with the sale of that property. We do not create a lot of traffic, um, as far as our use goes, but the QSR will. It's my, what we discussed with the planning commission and what we've discussed with staff is that once we have a user for that, we'll do a true traffic study that, that reflects that user, and then we'll build, uh, the road or the turn lane, I guess, in Cleveland, uh, for that user.
Well, I appreciate that answer, but I'm not sure that we got to the essence of my question. So let me try to approach it from a different standpoint.
So as far as, as far as how will we make sure that that is refereed?
That's my question.
Yep, so, so if we don't do what's in the code, then you don't have to give us a CO, and therefore we can't operate. So if we're going to spend $10 million and we can't operate a building, then obviously that will be a major issue with, with our company and our lenders.
Well, let me try to approach it from a different direction. Are you going to have some onsite management company or individuals who are going to be involved in the day-to-day operation and who are going to confirm from this point forward that the commitments are kept?
So tell me, when you say onsite, you mean onsite during construction or onsite during operation?
Both.
Uh, yeah, so onsite during construction, we'll have, uh, a general contractor that will be their onsite that will make sure the, the permits, so the building permits are followed. As far as ongoing operation, Extra Space Storage is who operates all of our stores. I think you'll find if you go to their stores, there's one there in South Bend. In our opinion, they're best in class as far as operation goes, and they will operate that store, uh, going forward. We will own the store, but it will be branded Extra Space.
Okay, so this is in a situation where you're going to develop and flip it to someone else as soon as the construction cycle is completed? Is that accurate?
Our plan, like I said, we've got 24 projects going throughout the country, six that are open. Our plan is not to turn and flip them. At some point in time, we might sell the whole platform, uh, but our plan is, is to own them and let Extra Space operate them. And, and I will tell you, we're looking for a second, maybe even a third store in the South Bend market.
Okay.
Our, what we'd like to do is come into a market and be the dominant self-storage player in that market. Um, and, and operate at least three stores in a market. This is just the first one that we have in South Bend.
Let me then shift gears a little bit and follow up on the question, uh, questions that my friend, Mr. Compton, asked you. If I understood correctly, you haven't heard from any neighbors in terms of concerns, and it doesn't sound like there was any type of remonstrance at the plan commission.
There was not, there was, I'll actually tell you, we, we do tons of these meetings. Um, it was a very expedited meeting, I was very impressed, and there was no opposition at all. Uh, and from staff, we have heard no opposition.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. But my question is, other than sending the legally required notice that is part and parcel of these type of proceedings, have you or your company done any outreach to the neighbors to try to proactively address any concerns that they may have had?
We have not proactively, I'll tell you, as, as a company, we are very involved in doing that. This particular corner, I will tell you, uh, is a corner that we've, it seems, our use seems to fit as far as what's being asked there, and didn't necessarily think that was something that would need to be done. We're happy to do that. Uh, we, unlike most development companies, or a lot of development companies, we actually seek input from both staff, uh, planning commission councils and neighbors, because it's, it's really, we want to be a part of the community. And what the exterior of the building looks like, how the building operates, we want the community to, for it to feel like it's a part of them. And so it's, it's very important for us to do that. Because we've gotten really no opposition, because of what's behind this site to the north side, uh, west to the south side with the mall, we just hadn't done a big outreach program. Uh, but we're happy to do that if you think it's need, needed.
Well, um, I, I appreciate your answers to my questions and your patience with me. Just to give you a heads up, since you're participating remotely, after we go through other speakers, I'm going to ask our city planner to come to the podium and talk about a reference in the staff report to some requests that were made of your company prior to the initiation of this petition. I'm not sure that I quite understand the reference in the staff report, but, um, at least preliminarily, it appears that some of the things that we asked you to do weren't followed through on. It's the first full paragraph on page two of the staff report. So if you have that in front of you, I'm going to ask Mr. Prince to come up later on and, um, help explain that to us. And then I'll, uh, most likely have some follow-up questions for you at that point in time as well. But I, thank you for your participation this evening and the information that you've shared to this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Mamalenti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Mr. Glenn, for providing some information that colleague, some of my colleagues have asked. And I'll apologize in advance if I've missed it in the staff report, and I've looked online as well. And I'm having a difficult time finding some, some examples or some renderings of a similar, uh, storage unit that, that you're proposing to build. Did I miss that? Or do you have anything online?
Uh, yeah, I can, if you want to, I can share my screen quickly and show you different elevations of buildings that we've built.
Yes, if you could, please.
Yeah, no problem. Hang on just a moment. Are you sure? Hang on just a moment. So...
While you're pulling that up, could you answer, what is your bread and butter with, that you typically do with your company? The majority of your developments?
It's forest development, so I don't know if any of y'all have been to, to Greenville, South Carolina. Um, the, our, we've done a lot of redevelopment stuff in downtown Greenville. Greenville's won a lot of awards for what our downtown has become. Um, and so in our hometown, we do that. On the road, we have done a lot of retail. Uh, we've, uh, been a preferred developer for Walgreens, for Trader Joe's, and have done those from the state of Washington all the way to Florida. Uh, currently, we are doing a self-storage platform, uh, in secondary markets throughout the country.
I was just trying, having a difficult time looking on your website of current projects of that.
Yes, we, we, we don't, that's something that we, we are big fans of, of having tons of information about all the stuff that we do. For the simple reason that, you know, when we were doing a lot of retail stuff, it, it just didn't bring us, you know, what the tenant, and honestly, the tenants didn't like us having all that information there, because they didn't want, uh, people to know what retailers we were, we were preferred developers for. Um, and so that's why.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Any other questions for Mr. Glenn?
All right, thank you, sir. If you could, uh, please mute your microphone once again. And we will ask if there is anyone else, first of all, physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Please unmute your microphone. Thank you. Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Then, Mr. Prince, if I could, uh, impose upon you to talk a little bit about the staff report?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Ken Prince, executive director, no longer city planner. Uh, thank you for that.
My apologies, Mr. Executive Director.
I think Derek would have been offended if he had been here, so that's the reason I, I say that. So regarding that language, when you look at the tiny conceptual plan that was included in the staff report, um, as the applicant had mentioned, they were combining two things that they don't typically do. So we, for the activity of the space, and by activity, I just mean a more commercial presence along the road, we had requested that they put the storage to the back and create that parcel in the front. And so when they showed conceptually that parcel in the front, that conceptual development that they showed that has no relation to anything at this point, because they don't have a tenant, had issues with it. We identified that in that paragraph and reflected that in the conditions that were in your ordinance. So anybody that comes in is going to have to comply with the ordinance that's ultimately adopted, assuming it is adopted this evening. But that was the reason for those comments in the staff report.
So that paragraph aside, you're, you continue to believe that the staff recommendation in favor of this petition and the conditions that are embedded in the proposed ordinance are in the best interest of the community?
We do.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Any questions? Any additional questions for the executive director, Mr. Prince?
Of Planning and Community Development, yes, thank you. I don't know what, I don't know what to call you, Chief Cook and Bottle Wash, right? Better title, so.
Undoubtedly, that won't be the last time that I call you the city planner, so please be patient.
Been 20 years, I get it.
But thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-52, excuse me, an ordinance amended chapter 137 of the Multiple Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. That's from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to add two single-family homes at the village at Harrison Creek.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2021-52, report that they have examined said matter, and in their opinion, it should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now move into the second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2021-52. Mr. Lang has already come forward. Mr. Lang, good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year to all of you. Uh, the petition before you is a parcel that was part of a PUD for the original village at Harrison Creek. Um, the parcel wasn't designated as lots, it was just an unidentified part of it. It was not part of the property that was built upon by Wees Homes when they did the villages at Harrison Creek. It was owned separately by Portage Realty. Long story short, the parcel is the last parcel there now. The owners that bought it from Portage Realty is the Barak Group, who has been building all of the villas at, uh, Revere Wood right there. What we're looking to do is to amend the PUD so that we can put two single-family homes on that parcel that's left right there. The lot is large enough to accommodate two homes. The lots will be larger than the home sites that are located in the village at Harrison Creek right there. So we're before you to ask for that amendment so that we could build two single-family homes on the property. Um, the developer representative, Tom, is here also. If you have questions with regards to the homes, I'll answer any questions you have with regards to the development part of it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lang? Mr. Compton?
Yes, Terry, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Congratulations on your boilermakers. Will these be villas? Will these be part of the villas, or will they be individually owned homes?
They're individually owned homes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions for Mr. Lang, Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Lang, for presenting this evening. Uh, could you please just confirm the location, how the houses will sit? When, where's the front door going to be facing?
Front doors will face Beacon.
Beacon?
Yes.
So the driveways will be entered?
Yep.
In off of Beacon?
Yes. No driveways would be allowed by the engineering department coming in off of 12th Street or Harrison.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lang? Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you, President. Good evening.
Good evening.
Will the houses be built in the same style as the surrounding houses? Or will they have a different type of architecture?
The, that'll be a question that Tom can answer when his portion is.
Why don't we finish with Mr. Lang, and then we can move on to anybody else who wants to speak after that. Any other questions for Mr. Lang? Um, one question for you. As you know, water issues out there are always dicey. Not so much with some of the new development, although it's my understanding that that's still prevalent. But there have always been some concerns about the water table and how it's structured. Is there any reason to believe that there'll be any particular issues? If I'm a neighbor, is the construction of these two homes going to upset what hopefully is a pleasant existence without any water problems to the vicinity?
We'll be working with the engineering department with regards to, with the new additional stormwater that comes off of the two home sites. If the basin is required to be enlarged, we will enlarge the basin to accommodate that. Basically, at this point, the, the amount of water that falls on that parcel, whether there's a house there or its yard, the same amount of water is going to fall there. So we will monitor what the engineering department will require for that runoff, uh, time of concentration, so.
And then, not so much a question as a comment, the staff report, um, makes reference to the extended work that you have done in conjunction with our staff to try to bring us to this point this evening. So, uh, we appreciate not only the work that our staff has done, but, uh, your work to try to bring this to fruition, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Lang? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you again. That, not a question, but more of a comment, and my children would be very upset with me if I didn't mention this. The retention pond, if you could stock that with some big fish. That's their, one of their fishing holes that they like to ride their bikes to.
Have them go over to Tony's house and fish her off the pier.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Please come forward.
Good evening. Tom Demister with the Barak Group, uh, 1216 Old Field Circle, Mishawaka, Indiana. And I actually have some, I put together a little bit of a pamphlet that kind of shows the layout of the house, if I may.
Please.
Thanks, Tom.
Good job.
I'll give you guys a second again.
Thank you.
It'll take us more than a second to get it.
They're used to me passing it out too much, so. This, this is a test, whether they can. Good, I'm really proud. Just a little hiccup at the beginning.
Should have used some tack.
How many did you have there? Okay, I'll get the 10th one one day. I'll get somebody.
Thank you.
What I presented there is kind of, it will, that will be the design of the home there. It's a two-story, about 19, almost just shy of 2,000-square-foot house. A three-bedroom with a flex room that could be either used as a nursery or, or a smaller bedroom or an office space, on a full basement. Um, they'll be designed exactly the same, but they'll have some aesthetic features on the exterior to give the presentation that they're not the same house. Um, so it, I don't know if you're familiar with our building. We, we build a quality-built home. Uh, we, we've done the villas there at Revere Wood. Um, we're doing the T-section or the estates, uh, expansion of Revere Wood now currently. Um, so we, we pride ourselves on, on our quality, of our quality, of our use of our contractors. And this project would be nothing, uh, short of that. And, Mr. Mamalenti, you asked about the pond there. This is actually next to the one on Beacon, so there is no standing water in that pond. Uh, so, and, and I actually live in that neighborhood there at, uh, where we're looking to get the amendment to the PUD. Um, and a little backstory on this is, we originally, there's an easement there that we do not own. That is, it is owned by a company from, um, that was the division of Wees. We initially, it was recorded in error to be part of Lot 1. Um, we attempted to purchase that from the lot owner at Lot 1. Due to a scribner's error in the recording of it, it actually came back, it was not owned by Lot 1. It was still owned by Wees with the rights of the HOA to have that strip of land. Um, it just did not become cost productive, and we could not fit any larger of a development in there. Um, we wanted originally to kind of continue on the theme what they had with the Call of Sex type subdivision there. Just wasn't enough space there to pull that off. So that's why we've come to this plan with two houses.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Demister, Mrs. DeMaye?
I will ask you the same question. Is the architecture of the homes, going, the two homes that you're going to build the same in the, as the ones that's surrounding?
They're actually, the ones that are surrounding are a little older and dated, and they're all of that tan feature. I jokingly say, the only thing that tells the difference between my house and the neighbor's is the color of the shutters. Uh, so we will not be putting a tan facade to it. It, they're not going to be matching the existing houses that are there. And if you look at this, when you're driving in, these houses look totally, would be looking totally separate from that subdivision. You would not even enter into Harrison Creek to get to these houses. These houses are accessible off of Beacon.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you for your presentation and for explaining why my kids never come home with fish, so, thank you. Have these homes? I know, I live kind of off of Rock Mount near the, the newest, um, subdivision that you guys are creating. And I know at the, at the beginning of those, that stages, they sold out pretty quickly. And I think you may have run into some, some cost issues and it raised the price. Do you, do you anticipate these lots being comparably priced to the, the ones kind of in the back?
Correct. Uh, they'll be in that price range. Um, you know, I wish I could predict that market a little bit better, you know? It just depends on subcontractors, depends on, uh, um, supply, demand, or supply of materials.
Sure.
So it, you know, unfortunately, we, you know, as the prices rose, our income or our profits did not. It just compensated the expenses to, to build nowadays, so.
I was speaking more, specifically more towards the lot.
The lots, um, due to such, they're a little smaller than the estate lots, they'll probably be a little, little less than what the estate lots are.
Both will be two-story, correct?
Correct.
And will they be mirror images or are they separately designed?
The one design that you have there will be the design of both houses. We'll just change the exterior features of it as far as like siding colors, stonework, uh, so on and so forth. Um, they may, what, what, what you probably will plan on doing is putting the garages side by side, so you're not looking at door-to-door type thing.
And so you're going to build these prior to finding a seller?
Yes, finding a buyer?
Finding a buyer, yes, I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Demister, good to see you again. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else present with us this evening who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yep.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9-2-0.
Thank you. We will now move into privilege of the floor, and at this time, we would invite members of the public to the podium to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? All right, thank you. Hearing no one, we will move into unfinished business, of which there is none, so new business. And at this time, as is typically the case, we have a series of appointments to make, not only with respect to our council committees, but to various boards and other opportunities for people to serve the community. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the council committee assignments and appointments as is reflected on the sheet that was distributed to the council from the clerk's office.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve our committee assignments and other appointments as reflected on the document that was distributed by the clerk's office. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, which leaves us with the acceptance of our conflict of interest forms. And Madam Clerk, do you want to read the names of those individuals who have submitted conflict of interest forms?
Dale Woody Emmons, Anthony Tony Hazen, Greg A. Hicksonbaugh, and Matt Mamalenti.
Thank you. So with that, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the conflict of interest forms that have been submitted by the council people referenced by the clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the conflict of interest forms. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Matter carries unanimously. Is there any other new business to come before the council? Mrs. DeMaye?
I have some new business. I just want to have a reminder about this month's West End Neighborhood Watch meeting, which will be held next Tuesday, January 11th, at St. Bevo's in their activity room at 7:00 PM. This month, it will be an information open forum with attendees either there personally, we hope as many can come, or attending virtually, and it will be on Facebook Live. So those of you who are unable to attend in person can join in the conversation via that platform. And if you have any questions or comments beforehand, you're always welcome to address the, to send questions to the West End Neighborhood Watch group, the Facebook page, and the moderators there will have those ready for us that evening. As always, the meeting will be kept to one hour, our promise to you. Parking is on the south side of the church and this is open to all residents of Mishawaka, whether in person or via the Facebook Live platform.
Thank you. Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. The West End Neighborhood meeting, usually scheduled for the third Thursday, will be on the second because of conflict with St. Bevo, so it'll be held on the 13th of next Thursday. And our speaker will be our council president, Mr. Greg Hicksonbaugh. President Hicksonbaugh will give an overview of what the council duties are and how the council functions. And as usual, he'll be ready for any questions that the participants have there about the council. So it should be a very interesting meeting. We've never had the president of the council address the neighborhood meeting and that, so we look forward to having everybody there. Then, following month, in February, we'll go back to the third Thursday and that, and we have speakers lined up. That will be the code officer here, and, well, the code officer for the West End. And I don't know if anybody else will be here, but we'll wait and see. And then, on March, we won't have a meeting because I'm going to be on vacation, and then in Feb, in April, we have another meeting scheduled, and that will be State Rep, Mrs. Bauer, and that, and she'll be updating everything that's happened down at the state legislature and that. The legislature should be over by end of February and that, and so she'll update us on everything that happened down there. So we've got the next three months lined up, so invite everybody. You don't have to be just from the West End, you can be from anywhere in the city. All are welcome. And as usual, we'll have the West End Bakery donuts there for that evening. Again, thank you, look forward to seeing you. Again, it's on this next Thursday, and then the following, we'll be back on the third Thursday of every month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Just another reminder that the Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch meeting will host our next meeting off-site as we did in November, but this one is January 19th at 7:00, and we will be doing a tour of the St. Joe County 911 Dispatch Center. We've done it a couple of years ago and it was really well-attended. If you're able to make it, I strongly suggest you do so, just kind of get you an idea of what those folks deal with on a day-in, day-out basis and what kind of stress that they're under. So if you can attend, all city residents are welcome. St. Joe County 911 Dispatch Center at 7:00 on the 19th of this month.
Thank you. Any other new business to come before the council? And hearing none, a motion to adjourn is in order.